Two million six hundred twelve thousand four hundred forty-two dollars. Wastewater Treatment Management, two hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars. Cemetery Department, two hundred four thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars. Continuing under Health, was that a, was there a hold? No, okay. Continuing on to Health and Human Services, Board of Health, five hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars. Council on Aging, six hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars. Veteran Services, one hundred eleven thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars. Continuing on to Culture and Recreation, Library, one million eight hundred twenty-six thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars. Parks and Grounds, five hundred eleven thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars. Land Management, fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Historical Commission, fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty. Let's stop and vote there. That's starting at Public Works, down to Historical Commission is the last one. All those in favor of those items, please say aye. All opposed? That passes, it's unanimous. Continuing, Debt Service, three million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars. I have a hold on Debt Service. Unclassified, under Otherwise Unclassified, negative one million seven hundred twelve thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. Employee Benefits and Miscellaneous, eleven million six hundred thirteen thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars. I have a hold on Employee Benefits and Miscellaneous. Transfers to and from Trusts, fourteen million one hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars. Is that a hold? Okay. Continuing, Community Preservation Fund, under Community Preservation Fund, one million eighty-nine thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars. Under Water Enterprise Fund, Water Enterprise, five million two hundred fourteen thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars. Under Recreation Enterprise, one million two hundred twenty-three thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars. Under Ambulance Enterprise, one million five hundred eighty thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars. And under Stormwater Management, one million five hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars. All right, so I have holds on Debt Service, Employee Benefits and Miscellaneous, Transfers to Trusts, and Stormwater Enterprise. Let's vote everything else. All in favor of the remaining items just listed, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That's unanimous. Will the person who had the hold on Debt Service come to the microphone? Megan?
Hi, Megan O'Connell, forty-four South Shomston Road. Just a question with the eleven point nine percent increase. Can we get a breakdown as to how much of that is due to principal increase and how much is due to increase in interest rates?
Thank you. We'll get Dan O'Donnell to answer that. He's just checking his numbers. Thank you, Dan.
So on the operating budget, the Lars Docman online on page one hundred and forty-six, we actually have a list of new projects that are being budgeted here. Excuse me, page one forty-four. For next year, we have Plain Road Phase Two Sidewalk. We did have a placeholder for the Nutting Road Artificial Turf for a hundred and eight thousand. We have a placeholder for the Robinson School Feasibility for eighty thousand. And then the West Street at North, Main Street improvements of thirty-two thousand. So overall, the non-excluded general fund is actually decreasing by twenty thousand dollars with those increases in there. Yeah, so for, it's staying fairly level for the most part. For the excluded debt, we do have the Library coming on. Estimated payment in FY twenty-six of four hundred eighty thousand dollars as a short-term interest payment. And then we'll also have the Blanchard Roof MSBA project of about two hundred and fifty-three thousand coming in. So those are really the changes that are taking place within the Debt Service budget.
Did that answer the question, Megan? Okay, great. So let's vote on Debt Service now. All in favor of Debt Service in the amount of three million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. That's unanimous. Motion passes. Will the person with the hold on Employee Benefits and Miscellaneous come to the microphone? There you are, Heather.
Heather Fitzpatrick, Shannon Circle. We spoke a little bit about this under Schools, and I just wanted to seek clarification because it was mentioned that the Blue Cross Blue Shield was the broker. My understanding is we have a broker that processes the claims, but that we are self-insured up to a stop-loss number? And that's the, it just seemed confusing earlier, so I wanted clarification.
We'll get Kristen to answer that.
So the town of Westford is partially self-insured, which means that we pay the majority of our claims through our health insurance trust. We also have a stop-loss policy, and we just renewed that in March, that any claim that goes over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is caught by the stop-loss. We pay a broker, they help us go out, and we have Blue Cross Blue Shield under that broker.
Sir, at the middle microphone? Will, stop playing with that.
James Shulley, Nineteenth Flushing Pond Road. The Finance Committee report that's usually in the thick pamphlet, sixty, seventy pages in the back here, isn't here today. So I hope you'll bear with me while I just read a couple lines from page forty-three of that. You can find it online, which is where I found it. "The town of Westford moved health insurance from fully insured to partially self-funded arrangement effective March one, twenty-twenty-two." Soon after this change, the number of high-cost claimants increased dramatically, and this trend continued. As of December twenty-twenty-four, the town had eleven confirmed high-cost claimants who exceeded the hundred and twenty-five stop-loss deductible. There are currently an additional eight predicted future high-cost claimants anticipated to incur claims totaling at least a hundred thousand within the next twelve months, including two expected to exceed five hundred thousand. The stop-loss insurance takes over after the town pays up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each covered life, as I understand it, claims. When the, in February twenty-twenty-five, the Health Insurance Trust Fund trustees voted to renew the stop-loss insurance that renewed at the beginning of this month. The renewal increases the deductible from a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the stop-loss insurance premiums increased by five hundred thousand dollars. Would have increased more if the town hadn't increased its initial coverage from a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When combined with the increase in premium, the net cost increases twenty-eight point ten percent. The healthcare costs being monitored closely by trustees. In June twenty-twenty-four, the Select Board asked the Health Insurance Trustees to investigate alternatives to the current model. My, I appreciate and feel gratitude that, in general, the town of Westford is financially well-managed. However, this item has been a consistent outlier for as long as I've lived here, thirty years.
I need to ask you to wrap up your.
Okay. So the, it looks like the insurance, so the question at the end of the first comment is, the insurance, Trust Fund trustees, meetings, agendas are posted on the town website regularly, but when I look for minutes, all minutes, the most recent minutes are back in November of twenty-twenty-three.
I'm sorry, I just need you to focus the question on the benefits. On the, on this line item.
All right, so my question is, is, is the minutes not appearing on the town website? Is that an oversight of some kind, or is that an intentional decision made?
So the Health Insurance Trust is a public body. We do hold open meetings via Zoom, and all are welcome to attend. We do take minutes, we are behind a bit on our minutes. The treasurer collector takes those, and I have reviewed a number of them that we hope to approve at our next meeting. We've been reviewing them slowly, but we do post those. I apologize that we're a little bit behind right now.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Final comment is, it's difficult to do contracts, I understand that. And I understand that generally organized labor wants to maximize non-taxable compensation. And the main way that is done, as I understand it, is through health benefits that are not taxed. We have this bouncing ball of increasing health insurance that is unmanageable, out of our control. So my comment is, I, to see if the negotiators of these contracts can find alternative, more predictable ways to provide non-compensated, I'm sorry, non-taxable compensation to the organized labor groups such as contributions to retirement funds or whatever that would be predictable and get us out of the health insurance business, which is very high-risk. And finally, my appreciation to the Board of Selectmen for initiating the look for an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Let's take a vote on the Employee Benefits and Miscellaneous item. Eleven million, eleven million six hundred thirteen thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion passes, it is not unanimous. And lastly, will the person who has the hold on Transfers to Trusts, please come to the microphone? Oh, it was the same question. Okay, let's go to the vote on that then. Transfers to and from trusts, fourteen million one hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. That one is unanimous. Unless I missed a nay. Okay. All right. We. Yeah. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we have a, we have a hold on Stormwater Management. Is that you, Emily? Okay, go ahead.
Emily Teller, Texas Road. I'm just wondering, I thought this was sort of a revolving fund, that the amount that we were assessed would pay for the expenses. And so I'm just wondering what the one point five million is that still needs to be expended.
So this isn't a revolving fund, it's an enterprise fund. So for enterprise funds, we need to set a budget. And then in the beginning of the language here, we have the revenue offsetting that budget. So it's in and out for the most part, but we do have to authorize it this way.
So it would be in and out, even amount?
No, there's a six hundred thousand dollar general fund subsidy, which we've had since the inception. It's because we had some costs that were already within the operating budget. So, you know, we wanted to make sure that we accounted for those when we set the rate for the stormwater revenue.
I think, I think you can see those, and correct me if I'm wrong, on the first page, Emily. The, the first page that has the twelve items coming from other sources. The, the next to last one is Stormwater Enterprise. All right. We're now ready to move to a final vote on the budget. Does everyone understand, we're going to be voting on the budget as a whole now? And we'll be using our clickers. Yes, Tom? Oh, yes. I guess I just don't like stormwater. Let's vote on the stormwater article first before we do the whole budget. And that amount for stormwater management is one million five hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion is not unanimous, but it passes. Okay, so we're going to vote on the entire budget now. This requires a simple majority. We're going to use our clickers to get this recorded. So when I say the vote is open, press one A, green one A for yes, red two B for no. The voting is now open. Ready? All right, I'm going to close the vote. Voting is closed. Motion passes, two hundred and thirty-three to seventeen. Okay, sir, with the resolution. Did you want to come forward and make your resolution at this point? I'm sorry, can't hear you, step up to the microphone.
I said, I think it's kind of moot. Well, I guess we could be looking at future CPM funds.
It's up to you.
Okay, so I said, the Westford Town Meeting recommend that the Select Board investigate using CPM and other funds to improve nutting fields to a natural turf field. We can't leave it out of action. We've got to figure out how to get that playing field back in use. That's it.
Okay, so just before we get to comments, this is a resolution, it's not binding. It's just a sense of the meeting resolution to guide the town officials. Sir?
Justin Loker, one oh three Russell's Way. I want to ask clarifying question. When you say natural turf, do you mean grass, or do you mean some other surface? Okay, grass.
All right.
June McMorrow, Kings Pine Road. So it's my understanding that an article coming forth from the, coming forth to the floor of annual town meeting or fall town meeting, which comes under the auspices of the CPA, has to be blessed by the Community Preservation Committee. And so I, I just, I don't think we should be voting on this now. So first of all, I just want to make sure, sir, that made the motion, you have CPM in the motion, but you mean CPA? Community Preservation Act?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I don't know how we get to the CPA if I don't ask my Select Board to go do it. I didn't ask them to do anything specific, but, you know, are we going to ask them to do something about nutting field or not?
So Steve, if you can possibly change CPM to CPA? Oh, you're so fast, okay. We know what the motion is. Again, it's a resolution.
Of the Select Board. The way this process works, someone, for example, Parks and Rec or the Soccer League, somebody, goes to the CPC, the Community Preservation Committee, and requests the money for a purpose. They would then approve or not approve that. That comes to the Select Board to either recommend or not recommend that decision. The Select Board's got no jurisdiction over the CPC. That's, so it's a fine resolution, but we can't control what you want us to control.
I think the proponent is suggesting that the Select Board approach the CPC, the, the Community Preservation. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that, I think what Scott is saying is that's not something the Select Board usually does. They don't, they don't, they don't usually, they're not usually the proponents of these articles. Chair of the CPC Committee.
I think the best thing to do, since this is the first time we're having this kind of discussion about this particular issue, I'm more than happy to make an inquiry in two places. One, the attorney of our town, and the other one for the, from CPC in Boston, to find out what the parameters are around this field, because it had been so contentious. We got to do what we did with CPC funds before it was taken to court. The following year, it was prohibited. So I'm more than happy to make sure that we can get an answer on this, and then I'll turn it into the town. I can get at least the answer to see what we may do and what we may not do.
So can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
So is this something that could potentially come before Fall Town Meeting in October? If it goes through the proper channels, according to what you're, you're laying out, Marilyn? And I, I guess my recommendation would be October will be here before we know it. And whoever wants to submit the application for the CPC funds should probably get going on it. So it is something that we could potentially do at Fall Town Meeting?
I would have said never. I really didn't think we could, but it does make sense to some degree to, if, if what's there now is removed and the CPC funds do not remove it, and then you have a clear field again to maybe do grass. But I'm more than happy to see that within the next week or so.
Yeah.
I can, I can talk to CPC in Boston.
Okay.
I can ask the town manager's office to ask for a legal opinion here. I think attorneys here anyway. So that I think they can look it up and decide, yes, you can touch it, no, you cannot.
Did I not hear?
No, wait, wait, June. So we have a resolution on the floor suggesting that the Select Board investigate using CPA funds and the chair of the, to investigate whether we can use those for grass field at nutting. And the chair of the CPC has said that she is willing to do that type of investigation. I would like to just move forward and take a vote on this motion. It's a resolution, just a sense of the meeting resolution.
Yeah, because I'm willing to withdraw it if, if it's an issue.
We'll have an answer, and we'll, we'll find a way.
So it's on the floor, and it's been seconded, right? Have we seconded it? Yes, which means that you can't withdraw it, we have to take a vote on it. So.
Madam, can I just make an amendment, just, just to change the word from natural turf to natural grass? Just so people are really clear.
We have to amend it, Kathy.
You did the CPC to CPA really quick.
Whatever that was.
That was a mistake. That was, do you want, do you want to amend it to say grass? What? Okay. Is there a second to that amendment? All in favor of amending the words "natural turf field" to "natural grass," please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, now, you cannot withdraw the, so we now have an amended motion. You cannot withdraw the motion, we have to vote on it. So all in favor of the vote, of the motion, as it appears on the screen, for a resolution to this effect, as amended, please say aye. All opposed? All right, let's use our clickers, it's quick, it's quick. Simple majority. Ready? Voting's open, all in favor, please say aye. I mean, please vote, please vote with your clickers, using the green one A. If you're opposed, the red two B. I'm getting ready to close the vote. The voting's now closed. The resolution passes, one hundred and forty-four, yes, to one hundred and nineteen, no. All right. Articles eleven, twelve, and thirteen were disposed of under the consent agenda, so we'll move to Article. No, nine was under the consent agenda. And just make sure, yes, nine was to establish spending limits under revolving funds, and that was voted on in the consent agenda, there was no hold to it. Okay? So we just did ten, which is the budget, the resolution in between. Eleven, twelve, and thirteen were on the consent agenda, so we're now at Article fourteen. I appreciate corrections, I really do, but I think I'm right this, this time. Okay. Under Article fourteen, I have a motion that the town establish a three-hundredth anniversary celebration fund for the purpose of receiving and investigating such sums as may be appropriated by the town of Westford, any and all sums received by way of income from the sale of commemorative items, and any and all sums from admission charges for commemorative ceremonies or events, and provided further that the treasurer shall keep such funds separate from other monies of the town, and the principal and interests thereof may be expended for the purposes of such celebration in the year of such celebration, in the year preceding or succeeding same, and that any surplus be returned and transferred by the treasurer to the general fund of the town. Is there a second to that motion? Okay. Are there any questions? Okay.
Roughly how much money would be spent by the town on this anniversary celebration? Or does anybody have an estimate on that number? How much money are we spending on this?
So this article is not to spend any money, it's to create the account. If there is future spending by the town through the tax dollars, it would be an appropriation at town meeting, which this body would vote upon.
Okay, well, I just feel as though it's, it's kind of frivolous to spend money, or eventually spend money on a party when we just voted no to vote to spend money on something that would have actual benefits for the children of our town at nutting field. Feels like something the, the French aristocracy would do before they got overthrown.
Yes, Megan, at the center microphone. Oh, okay, excuse me.
I just want to be clear that this would be a vehicle to accept donations, whether it be donations from residents, business owners, third parties, accept grants. So we are not at this time thinking that we're going to be asking the town for any funds related to this celebration. We hope we're going to have a good time, right? We want to celebrate our three-hundredth anniversary, but at this time, we're not asking for funds. We're hoping that there will be donations. Those donations would go directly into this account and then be funded for that program after that.
All right, seeing no further questions, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion passes by a majority, it is not unanimous. Under Article sixteen, I have a motion that the Select Board be allowed to acquire and accept easements for the Stony Brook Bridge project by purchase, gift, or eminent domain for the purpose of the construction, installation, inspection, maintenance, improvement, and repair of the Stony Brook Bridge at Poly Road and appurtenances thereto, all in accordance with the Stony Brook Bridge Improvement Project as shown on plans filed with the town clerk. Is there a second to that motion? Are there any questions or comments about this? Oh, yes. Sorry, before we get there, before we get there, there's going to be amendment to this article. Dan?
So there's an amendment that Steve's bringing up right now to eliminate Section D, which talks about money. There is no money involved with this article.
So does everybody understand the amendment? Section D indicates that the article would allow us to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds or borrow. That, Section D is being eliminated because there is no intent to raise any money or borrow for this, for this project. Any questions about that, about the amendment? All right, seeing none, let's vote on the amendment. All in favor of amending the article, please say aye. All opposed? The amendment passes, it is not unanimous. Now, we'll direct our discussion to the article itself. Yes, at the microphone to my right.
Donna Jovany, fifty-one Stony Brook Road. We keep hearing vague references to the bridge becoming unsafe, yet there's been no documentation indicating that, and I've been asking for safety data since November. In fact, the engineering assessment that I have here, you can all find online, indicates the bridge has no significant. can all find online, indicates the bridge has no significant structural deficiencies in need of repair. It also says all primary structural elements are sound. The only non-compliant feature cited in the report was the height of the sidewalls. The report says those are the main driving force behind the project. This is a 150-year-old, masterfully crafted twin-arch stone bridge. It's protected as an historic site. It's accessed by a low-traffic, narrow road lined with mature trees, stone walls that are protected by our scenic roads' bylaw. The bridge has no through-truck traffic because there's a low eight-foot-high railroad bridge that makes it inaccessible for trucks, which, if you research it, are what cause wear and tear on bridges, not electric cars, as someone had suggested. So the documented facts indicate that the bridge is sound but has sidewalls that don't meet current traffic code, though it's operated safely for over a century. In 2020, the engineers recommended a minimally invasive, cost-effective approach of replacing the deck and putting up new stone sidewalls. It was estimated at 500K. In 2024, they shared the plan for that minimally invasive, cost-effective option. It clearly was not what we expected. It involved putting up high concrete barriers, fake stone veneer, removal of trees on the approaching scenic roadway, dismantling of old stone walls, adding highway guardrails and road striping, and moving my neighbor's driveway closer to the wetlands and diagonally through the middle of her front lawn after the town pays $150,000 to relocate her for a couple of months. Oh, and the cost-effective piece? Well, the estimate as of last fall had quadrupled to over $2 million. Spending that on a small piece of roadway that has not had safety incidents and is not gaining functionality to bring the bridge's sides up to code and to lose the historic charm and character seems unnecessary. Does the bridge need paving? Sure, they drilled holes for the structural analysis, and the patches are failing. Does it need maintenance? Sure, just like any other asset. But we should err on the side of preserving these historic treasures that define the character of our lovely town before we lose them forever. Vote no. Let Mass DOT fix a bridge or a roadway that has actual safety problems.
Thank you.
Wow.
Okay, can I ask that we don't have any demonstrations of support or?
Sorry.
Okay.
No here.
No, Kristen, it's maybe not on?
Just want to make one note of clarification. This project is being funded by Mass DOT, not the Westford taxpayers.
Heather Fitzpatrick, Shannon Circle. Are there, can we talk about the traffic that goes over this bridge? Because I do remember us allocating a lot of money for one house that would have to travel over this bridge, so it does seem kind of ridiculous. Mind if I fall into that classification of state government bloat? So I just, I'm curious if we have traffic, information we can share.
So as far as traffic, there's limited traffic on that road, but one of the main issues is we have one property that's located between the Stony Brook Bridge and the railroad bridge located just north of the Stony Brook Bridge. It's a low clearance, eight-foot clearance under that bridge. So if we fail to address the current deficiencies, Mass DOT could force us to close this bridge at some point. And when they do, they don't have to provide any notice. Similar to what happened with the Beaver Brook Bridge, we had about 48 hours' notice where we had to close the bridge. So if we were to close the bridge or DOT forces us to close the bridge, that adjacent property at 58 Stony Brook Road would only be accessible to vehicles under eight feet in height. So fire trucks, ambulances, delivery trucks, and any other vehicle taller than eight feet would no longer be able to access that property. And the funding for the temporary relocation during construction and to acquire these easements was approved at the 2023 annual and special town meetings. It's our recommendation that we allow Mass DOT to rehabilitate this bridge now at their cost, the $2 million, while the bridge is still salvageable, and not wait for the bridge to deteriorate to a point where it can no longer be restored and will be a lengthy closure and full replacement with a modern-style bridge. So the current proposal by Mass DOT is essentially just to take off the existing curbstone barriers that are about nine to 20 inches in height, build a concrete deck or relieving slab that distributes the weight over the bridge, will prolong the life of the bridge, and also remove a recent posting restriction that Mass DOT put on the bridge. So right now, the bridge can only accommodate trucks of a certain size. Now, there may not be a lot of truck traffic now, but if the bridge were to close in the future, this could cause the bridge to be closed in the future.
Okay, Wendy?
Wendy Gloyd, 16 Pleasant Street. I live on Pleasant Street, right up the road from the Abbott Mill, and the Abbott Mill Bridge that is right near the railroad track that was deemed safe until all of a sudden one day, a person from the state or government came to look at it. They closed it immediately. Our, we had a whole lot of traffic going through there. There was no planning, so zero happened for nearly a year. So that is what you're looking towards if you're not planning ahead for these things. It's not just the time for the building or the reconstruction to happen. Where you don't have a plan in place, nothing happens until it is failed, and then you have to wait close to a year to get all the plans together and everybody on board and get the funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At the microphone to my right?
Rachel Bommer, 1 Crusade Road. I just wanted to make a couple of points. One is that, you know, Westford has these historic areas, historic bridges, and we're talking about coming in and placing a facade over it for something that might fail, that's structurally sound now as I understand it. There is no risk to it now. And conserving these things in Westford is what makes us quaint. It's what gives us that hometown feel. So that's my first point. My second point is that while this may not be Westford's money, it's still our tax-paying dollars, and we need to be responsible with those tax-paying dollars.
Thank you.
So what, all said and done, this bridge is going to be preserved. Like I said, the existing stone arches will remain in place. Our biggest concern, like I said, is if we have to close this bridge, we are going to basically have a property that may be considered prohibitive take. We may have to take that property just because they won't have access to the vital services of the town.
At the microphone to my left, Chief Chambers?
Yes, in my capacity as chief of police, I often are, I am often asked to give my recommendation based on public safety impacts of any of the projects that come through. If this bridge were to close, you will see a potential problem with our response times. Having access to that bridge that goes underneath the railroad tracks and over that bridge sometimes does increase our response, or decrease our response time when we have those trains that go through town. We all know that there, sometimes there's several hundred cars long, and you can sit in that traffic for 10 minutes, 15 minutes even sometimes. When they're long enough, they will go from the Nabnassak Crossing all the way over that Stony Brook Bridge and to the crossing at Depot, and that essentially cuts off half of our town. So the only option if that bridge is to be closed is to wait for the train for some of our response, both ambulance or police response to that side of town. So that's just a consideration.
Thank you. Erica, center microphone?
Erica, Francis Hill Road. I, for Francis. I, I'm a bit torn on this. I just wanted to say to people who haven't trafficked in that area that it is a truly charming little bridge, and putting up concrete stuff there is, I think, is going to really detract. I also do, is that echoing? I, I do note that there is that very low bridge right near there, so getting any kind of sizable truck through there isn't possible, right? So you can't go down that road because it's like 10 feet away. So the idea that we're afraid of the state coming and saying, we have to close this bridge, this bridge that has been functioning well for over 100 years and has no structural deficiency at a time when they're likely to be losing highway funds and stuff from the feds, I don't know how high that risk is. I admit I'm torn. I don't want them to shut anything down, but I just wonder what that risk really is. It's a charming bridge, and I would hate to lose it.
Well, it's good to answer to that question. Can you answer the question about what risk, what the risk is?
So typically, in a bridge failure, one of the first things they would do is post the bridge, which in October of last year, DOT made us post the bridge to reduce the allowable weights on the bridge, the size of the trucks. So that typically is the first step. And as far as the concrete, the barriers will be constructed of concrete, but they'll be faced with stone. So the final appearance of the bridge will look consistent with the existing stone arch. So the stone arch will be maintained. In 50 years, if we want to take that concrete off, we're still going to have the stone arch. If this bridge were to fail and we were to replace it, it would be a modern-style bridge, and we would lose that arch forever. So this project is really meant as a preservation project in order to maintain the existing arch. When DOT first initiated this project, they're the ones that started it back in 2017. We advocated for preservation rather than full replacement.
I'm going to take the other folks who haven't spoken yet first, and I'll come back to you, okay? Chief, at the microphone.
Mike Dennehy, Fire Chief. I just want to be clear that, to echo what Chief Chambers said, our ambulance cannot fit underneath that bridge. None of our apparatus can fit underneath that bridge. As far as the apparatus, the fire trucks, I've already directed my personnel not to drive over that bridge unless that house is on fire. So that's a risk that I'm taking if that house is on fire. That's also a risk of a million-dollar truck that may not make over the bridge. So this is necessary to be able to give the fire protection and medical services to that resident.
And at the center microphone?
Doug Burns, 4 Black Bear Lane. I thought I heard that this would cost the town nothing.
For construction. Back in 2023, at special and annual town meeting, a total of $150,000 was appropriated to acquire these easements that we're asking for today and for the temporary relocation of 58 Stony Brook Road.
So in 2023, that's two years ago, are we still within budget of the $150,000?
Yes, that's why we had the amendment to remove the section of this article to raise inappropriate funds.
Okay. Ma'am?
Yep, Rachel Bommer, 1 Crusade.
All right.
So you mentioned that it was a stone veneer. Is it, it's fake? I, I feel like that's if we took Parkerville School and said, let's put some vinyl siding on it. You know, I just, I think we can do better than this.
Can we get the construction of the stone veneer?
Sure. In order to meet current safety standards, we would need to construct the vehicle barriers out of concrete, which would tie into the concrete relieving slab, but we would face it with stone that would look very similar and match the existing stone arch. And the town will be able to have some involvement with DOT in the selection of that stone and the construction to make sure that the appearance of the vehicle barriers would match and blend in and maintain the aesthetic view of the current bridge.
So can I ask, who would you be, who would be on that committee deciding those things? You said the town. Is this going to be people who live in that area, or?
So it would be the town. There's no committee. I know that the Cultural Resources Division of Mass DOT has reached out to our historical commission to discuss these historic elements of the bridge. So those meetings should be happening soon. The current project is at the 75% design stage, so we still have time to provide input during design, but then also during construction. DPW, the Engineering Department, Historical Commission could be involved or would be involved to make sure that those stones match and that we're not losing the aesthetics and the historic value of the bridge.
And so again, I'm asking, does that mean?
I want to have a dialogue back and forth, particularly if it relates to the design of the bridge, which apparently there's a system for input outside of this meeting.
I'm trying to clarify whether or not, I'm just a resident of Westford. I'm not on any of these committees. Is it going to be open for people to make suggestions and?
I think, I think what he explained is there's not a committee, but that DOT reaches out or will reach out or has reached out to the people who are going to be immediately affected, like yourself, to take input.
Oh, I'm not going to be immediately affected. I'm just, I want to just preserve our town as all. Conservation. Thank you.
Okay. John?
Hello, my name is John Omato of ADH Imblin Road. I have a quick section. It sounds like there's been a lot of study and activity related to this, but is there a section of the center line of road that shows how you would get under the train tracks? Because I can't imagine that's even possible without digging up the road to the north a significant amount. Because the road goes up after you go, pass through the bridge going north. It's not level. I don't know how you're going to get a fire truck under there.
Are you referring to the railroad?
Let's have our engineer answer the question.
Are you referring to the railroad bridge?
Say again?
Are you referring to the railroad bridge?
I'm, I'm sorry.
The existing railroad bridge is to remain intact.
No, I understand that, but how are you going to get a fire truck under it? The height isn't enough.
We're not. That is one of the issues here. If we were to close this bridge, there would be no access under that low clearance railroad bridge.
You're not answering my question. How do you know you can make it work without spending money?
That wasn't the question, John. The question was how are you going to get a fire truck under the bridge, which he indicated that's, we're not. That's, that's one of the reasons to repair the bridge. Do you have another question?
Well, so you're not going to try and put the fire truck under the, under the bridge, under the railroad track?
Right.
So why are we talking about fire trucks?
Okay. I think the, that question's been answered a couple of times. If we don't fix the bridge and it has to be closed, the fire trucks won't be able to make it under the bridge, and therefore, there'll be no way to provide the safety that's necessary to the houses on the other side. I think that's what the question, am I characterizing it right, whoever?
Someone needs to draw a picture, because I don't think you're making sense.
Okay, maybe you can offline talk to the Engineering Department, and they'll, they'll draw a picture for you.
Thank you for that suggestion.
There are plans, there are plans recorded in the, in the town clerk's office as well.
Thank you.
Danali?
Danali Delmar, Dunstable Road. For me, in order to answer this question, I would really like to know what the feelings are for the people who live in that one house that would be affected by the closing of that bridge. Right, 58 Stony Brook Road? Are those people here? I have no, I have no idea. Are the people who live in 58 Stony Brook Road here, and would they like to answer this question? You don't have to, but if you wish.
I live at 51. I spoke with her. She couldn't make it today.
No, I'm not going to let you say what she would have said.
I'm just, you asked if she was here. I'm answering the question.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, I think that we've had enough discussion of this. Let's move forward. We'll use our clickers. And this is a majority vote. If you're in favor of the article, please vote yes. If you're opposed, please vote no. Voting is now open. you know, you still have time to change your vote if that changes your vote. I'm just going to give you another few minutes. We're trying to find somebody up here who can do math, since it's not set up that way. All right, ready? All right, I'm about to close the vote. Voting is now closed. All right, the motion passes by a two-thirds majority. The vote is 233, 233, yes, 45, no. Okay. Now we're going to go to Article 17, which was taken out of the consent agenda. Just give me a moment to get to it. Under Article 17, I have a motion that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain for public way and sidewalk purposes, including without limitation for pedestrian safety improvements, easements on properties located at West Street or at West Street or on or near North Main Street as shown on plans entitled Westford North Main Street and West Street Easement Exhibit dated January 17, 2025. As said plans may be amended on such terms and conditions that the Select Board deems to be in the best interest of the town and to execute any and all documents and instruments necessary or convenient to carry out the purposes of this article. Is there a second to that motion? Any questions? The person who had the hold, if you're still here, who had the hold on this at the consent Megan?
Megan O'Connell, 44 Salt Chelmsford. I was not the person that had the hold, but I do have a question. Since the previous article was also to acquire easements and required a two-thirds majority, does that also apply to this?
The, the one we just did, the Stony Brook article?
Yes, since they're both accepting easements.
This is a, this is a different, this is for a different plan and different easements. Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking if it's accurate that it's majority vote required.
Oh, majority as opposed to two-thirds. Yes. Town Council to explain.
Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry for the confusion. So in Article 16, in addition to authorizing the town to acquire the easements, you'll see in paragraph B that it also asks you to transfer care, custody, and control of certain town-owned properties. And so whenever the, the town holds property for a specific purpose, in order to change that purpose to a different purpose, it requires a two-thirds vote. So in Article 17, there is no similar transfer, it's only to authorize the acquisition of the easements. So for that reason, this one only requires a majority vote.
Does that answer your question? Great, thank you for the question. All right, let's, oh, there's somebody at the microphone, sir?
I, I did not put the hold on, by the way. Dave LeBlu, 16 Concord Road, and I'm the business manager at St. Catherine's. And for what it's worth, we are willing and eager to work with the town for an easement for part of our parking lot to make that entire area much, much safer.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to the vote. Do this on a voice vote. All in favor of this article allowing the Select Board to accept these certain easements, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The motion passes by a majority, it is not unanimous. Article 18 was disposed of in the consent agenda, so we're now at Article 19. Under Article 19, I have a motion to update the town's floodplain bylaw in accordance with the latest Federal Emergency Management Agency maps, as shown on the handout in the back of the room titled 2025 Floodplain Law, Floodplain Bylaw. Is there a second to that motion? All right, we have Joe Ginowitz here to explain the article to us, our land use planner.
Good afternoon. Article 19 pertains to an update to Section 8.2 of the town zoning bylaw, specifically the floodplain overlay district. Much like the update to this bylaw at last year's annual town meeting, this update is simply an administrative change as FEMA has updated their flood insurance rate maps and flood insurance study reports. FEMA routinely performs updates like this as better surveying and mapping data becomes available over time. Proposed amendments simply consist of referencing the latest effective date of FEMA's maps and insurance study, which will be July 8, 2025, removing references to flood zone types that are not in Westford, and adding definitions from FEMA's standard terms to divide flood zone types that are present in Westford. Keeping our floodplain bylaw consistent with FEMA's latest maps and study reports allow Westford to continue to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Proposed amendments were reviewed by the State Department of Conservation and Recreation and are deemed to be in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program standards as currently proposed. Remaining compliant with the program's standards allow residents of our community to continue to have the ability to obtain federal flood insurance and ensure the property owners in mapped flood hazard areas are eligible for most forms of federal disaster relief funds. Planning Board and Select Board have both recommended approval of this article, we ask you to do the same today. Thank you.
And can we have the recommendation of the Planning Board? Mike Bonifant, Chair of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good afternoon. Planning Board did open public hearing on the 3rd of February 2025 to allow the public to come in and comment. Board continued the hearing and closed it on March 3, 2025, voted 5-0 to approve this amendment to our zoning bylaw.
Are there any questions or comments about this bylaw? Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Chris Erickson, 41 Keys Road. Some of us are wondering, you mentioned this was administrative in nature. Will this change mean that people who do not have to buy flood insurance now have to buy it because now they're going to be in a floodplain?
We'll have Joe answer that question.
So while now your specific property has made its way into or not in the floodplain, we could obviously look that up for you. There is a map generally in the back of your handout. Areas that are in yellow are being added to FEMA's flood maps. Purple is being removed. We don't have any control over what gets added to or what gets removed from, that's based all on FEMA's. This change is administrative simply because by referencing those maps in our bylaw, it allows anybody who is required to get federal flood insurance the ability to do that. You could still get private flood insurance through any other parties, but for some reason you're being denied private flood insurance. You will always be eligible for federal flood insurance as long as our bylaw is consistent with FEMA's latest maps.
So it sounds like there may be some changes based on the maps.
There are changes to the FEMA flood maps, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy?
Yeah, Kathy on Rush Road. Were the people who are going to be affected by this notified? I would think that would be very helpful for each of those homeowners in that area to be notified by mail about what's, what we're voting on today.
So just to clarify, what we're voting on is to accept the FEMA maps as opposed to changing our maps. I just, just want to clarify that. But, but Joe, maybe you can answer whether or not folks have been notified.
There is a, there was a hearing process, our 40s floodplain map changes. It was, it was all publicly advertised, people were welcome to, to speak at the public hearings. So there was a public review process for the maps.
Stayed up. No, I'm just saying that when there's a public hearing, people in those areas don't really, not all of them pay attention. So I just want to make sure that they're being notified properly, that's all.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, let's call for the vote. This is a change to the zoning bylaw, so it requires a two-thirds vote. Let's use our clickers. If you're in favor of this, when I say the voting's open, press the green 1A button. If you're opposed, the red 2B button. I'm going to close the vote in a moment. Okay, voting is closed. Motion passes by a two-thirds majority, the vote is 254 in favor, 22 against. All right, we are now at Article 20. Under Article 20, I have a motion that the town amend Chapter 150 of the town's general bylaws, the Stretch Energy Code. By deleting that chapter in its entirety and replacing it with the new Chapter 150, the Specialized Energy Code, for the purpose of regulating the design and construction of buildings for the effective use of energy and the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions with effective date of July 1, 2026. Is there a second to that motion? Mike Berlinski, Chair of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee will, if he Can I ask, can I just ask that you guys sit down until they make their presentation? It's just, you can sit right there and I'll remember the order you're in, but it would just be helpful if, if they could make their presentation first.
Okay, thank you. Hi. Mike Berlinski, Chair of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. We have, our committee has recommended this article for adoption, and you'll see the Select Board is sponsoring it. Our committee originally wanted to go to town meeting last year, but we were deferred. So over the last year, we've been talking with various boards and committees, we've held a couple information sessions, and we've had a page on the town website to share information. Our information has come from the Massachusetts state government and other organizations. Next. So what is this Massachusetts Specialized Energy Code? Energy Code is a set of the building codes, but it focuses on building energy systems and energy efficiency. Building codes can change. They're generally on about a three-year cycle. They can get more or less stringent, and you'll see most recently they got less stringent. The Specialized Energy Code is a high-performance building standard to align with the state's energy goals. It builds upon the current stretch code. That is what is currently in place in town. The Specialized Energy Code differs from the stretch code. The specialized code only applies to new construction, not renovations or additions. New buildings can be all-electric or include fossil fuels. So there are options there. It is not a fossil-free code, that is a common misconception. The, there is also a focus on energy efficiency. So you'll see, this is under general bylaws, not zoning bylaws. And the language in the motions is from the state and has been reviewed by town council. So next slide. Why has our committee recommended Westford adopt this Specialized Energy Code? It advances Westford's commitment to environmental sustainability, it's in line with Westford's climate roadmap and Westford's strategic plan, and in line with the state's goals and incentives. Forty-eight municipalities have already adopted it, including our neighbors, Chelmsford, Acton, and Carlisle. It is limited in scope, only applies to new buildings. It does not apply to renovations or additions. There is a reduction in electrical loads from high energy efficiency. It provides flexibility in design options, all-electric or fossil fuel. There can be some upfront costs, but they can be offset by incentives and energy savings. Provides consumer protections and comfort, there is no cost to the town budget, no impact on current municipal projects. Westford has already adopted guidelines for municipal buildings that align with the specialized code. This would not impact the library project. If there is a new school, it would be eligible for additional state incentives. And this would position Westford for substantial additional state grants. Currently, Westford can pursue state grants around $100,000, and adopting this would let us pursue state grants around $1 million. So what does this Specialized Energy Code require? It depends on building type. For single-family homes, commercial, municipal, for renovations and additions, no requirements. For new all-electric buildings, no requirements. For new buildings that include fossil fuel, you must pre-wire for future electrical appliances. That's heating, cooking, hot water, clothes drying, and install solar panels. And the amount of solar depends on the size of the building. Backup generators are allowed. So a backup generator does not trigger fossil fuel use. Next. For large multifamily buildings, they will generally follow the passive house standard. That is a performance-based certification. It prioritizes thermal comfort and minimal heating and cooling needs. They'll be high-performance, super-insulated building envelopes that dramatically cut energy use, and in doing so, it'll reduce energy bills, increase indoor air quality, and comfort for occupants. So now, when will these requirements go into effect? That depends on the implementation or effective date. You'll see that's been proposed for July 1, 2026. So that date would apply to when building permits are issued. So we have over a year from now. Now, how much would adopting this code cost? No cost to town budget for residential, commercial, municipal buildings, no cost to current buildings, additions or renovations, no cost to new all-electric. For new fossil fuel, less than 2% increased cost has been observed. That's from the pre-wiring and solar. But those costs can be offset as there are incentives available and energy use savings. For multifamily, 1% to 4% additional cost has been observed. Also incentives are available and there would be energy use savings. So we've spoken with developers, some are currently proposing all-electric buildings in Westford, and passive house buildings are being developed across the state. Okay? So again, this is why we're recommending voting yes on Article 20. Adopting the Specialized Energy Code is good for environmental sustainability, no impact to existing buildings, limited scope, only new buildings, less demand on the grid from energy efficiency, flexibility in design options, consumer protection, comfort, lower energy bills, and unlocks additional state funding. Thank you for your attention.
Wow, perfect timing, 5 minutes 59 seconds. All right. Questions? Let's start at the center, Mike. Megan?
Megan O'Connell, 44 Salt Chelmsford Road. I make a motion to dismiss this article.
And what's the basis of your motion?
The basis is several bases. One, the overall recommendation by the committees is 17 to 18 against it. Number two, we have less than 300 people here and it's a very contentious article. I think we need to get more input from the greater community before we make a binding decision.
So those would be reasons to vote against it, Megan, but not reasons to dismiss it. And folks who left early could have stayed, as could others come. So I'm not going to accept the motion to dismiss. At the microphone to my left.
Vicky Geary, 51 Carlisle Road. The League of Women Voters of Westford strongly support the town's adoption of the Specialized Energy Code. According to the Westford Climate Roadmap, greenhouse gases emissions from the building sector are the largest source of emissions in Westford, at about 58% as of 2017. Adoption of the Specialized Energy Code is in keeping with both the town's and the state's net-zero energy goals and with the town's strategic plan. It is an essential means of reducing Westford's CO2 emissions. The Specialized Code does not ban the use of fossil fuels in new buildings. Instead, it calls for reasonable additional requirements for new buildings that use fossil fuel. The extensive research and data that the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee has provided clearly show that these are crucial improvements that will come at a reasonable cost to developers and will result in substantial energy cost savings for both homeowners and tenants. New buildings will be with us for decades to come, and these buildings need to be built based on the Specialized Code to facilitate the transition away from fossil fuels. By encouraging the electrification of new construction, the code will help both the state and the town reach our net-zero energy goals as the grid becomes increasingly powered from renewable sources. The League of Women Voters at a state, local, and national level has a long history of advocating for the protection of the environment and natural sources. Based on our position to support environmentally sound policies that reduce energy growth, emphasize energy conservation, and encourage the use of renewable resources, we urge you to vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Hello, my name's-
At the microphone to my right.
Hello, my name's John Omato. I live at 88 Chamberlain Road. I'm not in favor of this, and I'll tell you why. There's several reasons. The first reason is if you read the last sentence, the sentence says that, that it includes all future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto with an effective date. So any change they make, I, I work with a lot of building codes. So, and when you buy into one change, you're stuck with everything else they do along the way. They make amendments, and amendments don't have to come back to the town until they do a code, a big code change. And they may have to have votes, but usually not. Usually, once you buy into it, you own all the changes. And I'll tell you a short story. My wife and I renovated a house built in 1729. My wife and I renovated a house built in 1729, and we loved the house. We couldn't save the carriage house because it was just too far gone. It was falling down. So we built a new garage with a room above it. In order to do that, we were stuck with the stretch code. And the stretch code made us increase the size of our rafters. It made us increase insulation everywhere, and it cost about $20,000 more for my house back when we made the renovation. This change is going to make that change look like small change, so to speak. Because what they want you to do is they want you to, they want you to build an electric house, and if you don't, what they're going to make you do is you're going to put an infrastructure to allow a changeover at a later date. And that changeover at a later date may show up in the code. By the way, it's January 15th, 2031, and we expect you to change over. They can control you, and they will control you. This costs a lot of money in a town where everybody told me it's too expensive for my children to live in my town. And here we go, we add a stretch code that adds $20,000, and that's just to a garage. Imagine doing it to a whole house. So the stretch code added $20,000 on a house that's probably $40,000.
I need you to wrap up, John.
And this new code, I'm almost done, and this new code is going to add another $60,000 on a full house with all the extra stuff. So the question is, do we want our kids to live in town, or do we just want to feel good?
Thank you, John. At the center microphone.
Justin Lucker, 103 Russell's Way. I'm speaking out against this proposed article. If passed, as the gentleman before mentioned, this would require all future amendments to be automatically incorporated into our bylaws. The country is moving away from the government micromanaging how you can and can't build your house, not to, not in favor of. In addition, I think it's awfully ridiculous that we are concerned or freaking out over a town of 25,000 people in a state that's already doing a lot to curb its carbon emissions when it's peanuts compared to what China is doing with their new coal plants every year. And, yeah, the government shouldn't be telling you what you can and can't do in building your home, especially in something as trivial as this. So I'm just quoting against it.
Thank you. Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Dennis Galvin, 90 Conker Road. I'm here to speak against the article as well. The proponents are alleging the urgency of climate change and doing our part for net-zero emissions, and they cite the 58% emissions rate for houses. But it's very important to understand that the housing emission rate within the country, the country's rate is 13%, is very minimal. The top, the top emissions are done by transportation, ironically, by electrical power, they're ranked third, and then by industry. All right? The other problem is that, as has been mentioned, this directly impacts your property rights. It mandates, or it basically mandates, a transition to electric heat. It does allow for alternatives, but you have to pay for those alternatives. Those are the fixed wiring, the pre-wiring, as well as the solar panels. So you, we're talking about affordable housing, and now we're going to increase the price of building a house here about 2% as the proponents have alleged. This is inevitably going to have a problem, and create a problem. We're trying to expand the stock of affordable housing. The last situation is, and this is the one that really kind of gets me, is you're going to create a monopoly, you're in a way moving towards creating a monopoly for national grid. I don't know anybody who'd want to do that in their right mind. All right? Because if you've ever dealt with national grid, and I have electric heat in my house, it is very difficult to deal with them. And the ironic thing on top of that is, not quite a straight monopoly, but you're going to, China makes 90% of the solar panels in the world. They have an emissions rate of 33%. There's an irony here. I don't think it should be missed on anybody. So bottom line is, after all the sacrifices that you'll ask for in this, in this town with these, with these regulations, you won't accomplish anything at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. At the microphone to my right.
Marsha Young, 26 Acton Road. Look, I am passionate about the environment, but I am opposed to this article. For decades, we have been involved in transitioning to clean energy, and what have we learned? Number one, our electric rates have gone up. Number two, renewables like wind and solar have a lot of problems that no one's talking about. And three, the science has shown that global warming, while it is real, is not an immediate existential risk. We have time to do this properly. We learned from wind and solar that they cannot deliver reliable energy to meet our electric demand. They're not even clean or kind to the environment. They offshore their dirty mining and manufacture to faraway places. They destroy huge swaths of our beautiful landscapes, and few people realize their toxic waste is a ticking time bomb. The Specialized Code mandates more and more solar panels for Westford. Westford, this is crazy, given our northern latitude, our abundance of trees, and our typical New England weather. But more importantly, wind and solar destabilize our grid every time the wind doesn't blow and the sun doesn't shine. ISO New England has already warned us that as the grid becomes more heavily reliant on renewables, we will experience more power outages. The Specialized Code is billed as being the next step toward the 2050 roadmap to zero carbon. But the roadmap is not working. It's hugely expensive, and it's actually harming our environment. I ask all you environmentalists here, aren't you as pained as I am?
I need to ask you to wrap up. She needs to wrap up.
All right. When you look around and you see the wind and solar farms, does that pain you the way it does me? It is, it is a scar on our environment. It's time to say no. There are better ways.
Thank you. At the microphone in the center, please.
Michael Patton, 53 Plain Road. I'm also Chair of the PTBT, and we recommend it against this article. But first, I have two clarifications, because I believe we were presented incorrect information. The presentation says that this does not affect renovations. That I believe to be an incorrect statement, and I would like Town Council to comment that there is absolutely no understanding that this only affects new construction.
All right, let's, let's get Town Council to answer that. The question is, does this affect existing construction, or is it only new construction that's affected? Am I, did I say the question right, Mike?
Correct.
Yes. Thank you through you, Madam Moderator. So what the provisions of the code that you're accepting today says is that existing structures have to comply with the sections of the stretch code that have already previously been accepted, and that new construction is required to comply with this new Specialized Code if you vote in favor of it. Now, the code does not define what constitutes new construction. So there is sort of a sliding scale in that if you have an empty lot and you fill that lot with a brand-new building, that is clearly new construction. Likewise, if you currently live in an occupied house and you decide to put on an extra room, that is clearly an addition. That would not be subject to this code. The place where the line may become blurred is, say you have a dilapidated shell of a barn or carriage house, and you go and you try to turn that into 100 apartments, but you keep that one little shell there. In that circumstance, the building commissioner, in my opinion, would have the authority to say that that circumstance, even though you're adding on to something that's there, really is new construction. And, you know, that is something that would have to be left to the building commissioner on a case-by-case basis, and there would certainly be an opportunity to appeal if you disagree with his ruling, but in the vast majority of cases, it's going to be very clear whether something is either previously existing or not.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, the Architectural Access Board states that 33% increase in financial cost is considered new construction. My point is, it's a gray area. We don't know that for sure. The presentation stating it doesn't affect new construction is variable. It's not a known entity. Secondly, the presentation presented that it reduces the grid demand, and the town has applied for two projects in town in multi-residential and was informed by National Grid. To clarify, they were meeting this code, the buildings, and they do not have capacity to provide the all-electric building on one of these new construction projects. So overall, from a building perspective, the intent is great. Clean energy is good. But there is absolutely no plan to execute this effectively. So I feel that we need to move away from implementing this code at this time. We don't have enough information to know what we're getting into. We don't have the grid confidence that we're going to be able to support the electric needs if we go all-electric. These parts that fund these electric buildings come from overseas. They're not made here. There's going to be tariffs on these based on the current regime, and they're hard to get. During COVID, it took 50 weeks to get electrical devices. They're hard to service. Jeff doesn't have the staff to service the current buildings. He's going to have to subcontract more, increase costs, and I'm not seeing any of these cost gains. It's a significant upfront cost. I don't agree with the data. I'm in the business. I put this stuff in. It is not a 2% increase. It's a significant increase, and it increases operating costs going electric. You also have electric equipment for heat that can't work below 0 degrees without special provisions. We live in New England. There's a lot of reasons why-
Mike, I need to ask you to wrap up.
So overall, I think that this is a good article in the future, but it's not appropriate to vote on this at this time. We should vote now.
Thank you. Mike Berlinski wanted to respond.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify maybe the middle point about limited grid capacity. So agree, that is a top concern for the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. We have been working on that issue now for the recent time. And what I understand from the first project of two on that circuit is it was already proposed all-electric, and it was not rejected by the utility National Grid. The second building project on that circuit also proposed all-electric, was not allowed by National Grid because of limited grid capacity. Now, this was all before the adoption of the Specialized Energy Code, so it's really two different issues. But why we are promoting this code as a solution to the problem is because it promotes energy efficiency, and electrification of cooling will lower the peak electric load during cooling season in the summer. And so we think that that's a good solution to the problem of the limited grid. So thank you for raising that.
At the microphone to my left.
Carol Morse for Westford Climate Action. And there's another aspect to this discussion that I, we don't want to get lost, and that is the future of our children and grandchildren in a world that is exceeding all predictions in rapidly escalating temperatures, rising oceans, flooding, wildfires, and extreme weather. You may ask what this has to do with supporting the Specialized Energy Code. At the October 2020 special town meeting, our committee, Westford Climate Action, passed a resolution for the town to establish a Clean Energy Committee, which would create a climate roadmap with the goal of achieving net-zero greenhouse gases by 2050. In June of 2023, the roadmap was endorsed by our Select Board. This article would provide consumer protection as well as reduce carbon emissions, a key component of our climate roadmap. We are truly at a tipping point in the climate crisis and have no time to waste in doing all we can to mitigate this threat to our planet, our children, and grandchildren. We ask you, the voters, to join us in leading Westford forward, to meet our strategic goals for future generations and the health of the planet itself. Please join us in adopting this article. Thank you.
Thank you. At the microphone to my right.
Marion Harmon, 7A Old Colony Drive. I am strongly in favor of Article 20. The Passive House Standard, energy, in the Passive House Standard, energy use is dramatically reduced, whether you heat with gas or electricity. This will make new homeownership in Westford much more affordable. Passing the new standard is a climate mitigation that we can accomplish here in Westford. I know you've all noticed that energy is very expensive this winter. Our gas bill is extremely high. If we were in a passive house, we would have minimal expense this winter or any other. So I urge you to vote for Article 20.
Thank you. At the center microphone.
Sue Thomas, 7 Old Homestead. I have a request and a statement. We've, the Affordable Housing Trust spent a great deal of time speaking about this issue, and I can attest that everything I know from DOEAR and the state and other towns around the state, affordable housing is being built to Passive House standards, and it's being built that way because it's more affordable to live in, and that is as equally important as the initial purchasing cost. So if the Affordable Housing Trust would like to speak tonight or today, I encourage them to do that. So that's my request. My statement is that I'm supporting Article 20 because, like every building code, it's consumer protection. Most of us are not adequately prepared to assess whether our house will fall down two days after we move in. Consumer protection in this building code means that when you buy your home, you're not going to be required to rewire it in a future case, and your, your energy needs should be lower, particularly if you build a passive house, and significantly lower than they are today. The Specialized Code is also grid protection for that very reason, for you, for me, for the people in the new properties, because you will be using, you'll be applying a more critical standard to your energy efficiency. It's wealth protection for the same reason, for those of you worried about your heating bills this winter, your potential cooling bills next summer, if you're using less energy and you're, you're defraying your costs. So it's wealth protection, and it's taxpayer protection for exactly the same reason when we have our own buildings in town built to a better standard. And we're talking about building for the future, not for the past. Most of you, I think, are thinking about your own home and the cost you might have to renovate it, but we're thinking about 30, 50, 100 years in the future.
Sue, I need you to wrap up.
Okay. I know there's a lot of uncertainty right now, and it feels better to do what you've always done. It feels less risky, but that's a feeling. The facts are sometimes different from that. What do we know? We know the planet is warming. We know it has human health impacts. We know that there's a one-
Sue, I've got to ask you to end it.
Okay. Thank you. Please vote for Article 20.
Joan, we'll get the Affordable Housing, again. Joan Crotto is the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, I will let everyone know that we were, the Affordable Housing Trust was briefed by the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, and based on what they presented and the fact that they indicated the increased cost of construction would only be about 2% from the research they had found. Affordable housing felt that where it would reduce energy use and where it would reduce bills, energy bills for affordable housing occupants, that it was a good thing to look at and a good option. So we voted to support the Clean Energy and Sustainability's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. At the microphone to my left.
Madam Moderator, Alan Martin, Meadow Lane. I ask that you invite a member of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee to give an iron-glad guarantee to this assembly that if town meeting votes to adopt the Specialized Energy Code into the town's bylaws, that this will not enable the Commonwealth to require retroactive rewiring of all the structures in the town by a mere amendment of the code of Massachusetts regulations without even recourse to passing new statutes. Rewiring which in the case of existing buildings- Rewiring, which in the case of existing buildings, will be far more expensive than adding wiring subsystems to something that's under construction.
Yeah, I know. Well, if I understand, you're asking for an ironclad guarantee, which I don't think anybody can give about anything, basically. But you're asking for a statement that adopting this code doesn't mean that the Commonwealth could change the CMR, the Code of Massachusetts Regulations, to require something additional?
To require retroactive rewiring of, to retroactively require rewiring of existing structures.
Well, I guess, I guess I'd ask Town Council, I mean, it seems like the Commonwealth has the ability to do that right now, whether we.
We haven't adopted. Well, we haven't adopted the stretch, the Specialized Energy Code, therefore amending it.
Thank you, through you, Madam Moderator. So, yes, when you choose to accept a local option statute, you are buying into any future amendments to that statute or its enabling regulations unless, in the future, those amendments exempt your people or towns that have previously accepted the statute. So could I stand here and say that you are, would be without risk of the code changing? No, I absolutely could not say that. I also can't stand here and say that you would, you're not at risk now of the building code just being changed without you having any say. So there's always going to be risk that the state is going to do something that you have no control over.
Thank you, Greg. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So Mike Berlinski, Chair of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. I think I understand the concern. I can't react directly to the request, but I will say, we have committed, and we do commit now to you, Town Meeting, to monitor the situation in town and recommend, go through the process to other town staff, departments, boards, committees, and select board to make future recommendations to future town meetings, depending on energy codes. So whether that be to go up or to go backwards, or also to give feedback to the state, because we've seen that the state accepts feedback and makes changes to the code. So we do commit, so I will offer that. Our committee will commit to you to keep monitoring the situation and make the necessary, you know, appropriate recommendations in the future, given the situation. That's the best I can do now. Thank you for the interest.
Thank you, Mike. Emily?
Emily Teller, Texas Road. I went to the Planning Board meeting this week where the 530 multifamily project was proposed for 37 Powers Road. And our town staff is working very hard with that proponent to have it be all-electric. The next one, which was refused by National Grid, is where the Regency is. And you might recall that this Town Meeting, another date, has approved the MBTA housing for Westford. So many more large developments are coming in. We need to pass this now. The 530-unit plan for Powers Road is hoping to get permitted before the end of this year. So they will not come under the stretch code, the Specialized Energy Code. But the future ones will if we pass it now and give it the date of 2026. I just have a couple of quick things to say. This costs the town nothing. That's huge in these days of not passing overrides and trying to squeak out stuff. This costs this town nothing. It also gets us closer to the roadmap. You might have heard Kristin say several times in her report, the word sustainability. We're trying to move that way, and the years are getting shorter and shorter that we can do that. It also gets us close to being a climate leader community. And I trust the fact that 48 other towns and cities have passed the Specialized Energy Code. And the last thing is the developers' costs and actually the grid capacity is not the concern of this Town Meeting. We're trying to protect our town, our clean water, our clean air. And please vote to pass this today. Thank you.
At the center microphone.
Erica Cole, Francis Hill Road. We heard in the presentation that there may be extra added funds available to us if we were to pass this. I just wanted to provide a little extra data on what that is. We, earlier in this meeting, we passed the resolution for, sorry, not the resolution, the article, for the Robinson School. If that were to go ahead and come to new construction anywhere in town or at the Robinson School, that that, the MSBA has said that it will add three points to the cost of, that they will be providing to the town for reimbursement. So that extra three points, I believe, equates to 3%, which is, you know, noticeable amount of money. Also, I think it was Emily alluded to the fact that this puts us on a path to being able to acquire the designation of climate leader, which is one of, you know, many towns within the state have also done. And by acquiring climate leader, and this would be a major step in that process, we would be able to have access to a very large set of funds to do even more energy-saving measures in town. And I want to point out that energy-saving measures in town, our investments, we get that money back in savings. That's the point, right? If you put in extra insulation, you have a reduced heating bill. And that is extra money in your pocket that you can spend on something else. So we will get extra money from the state for these types of investments, whether it's through the MSBA or the DOEAR. And I just wanted to make sure we were aware. Thanks.
Thank you. At the microphone to my left.
Chris Clint, Texas Road. I like the spirit of this, but I'm not quite sure of the timing of it. And I'm not sure, I think we need a little more discussion on what the future, future people, future builders. For example, there was the part about new construction would, if you wanted to use fossil fuel, great, but you still have to put solar panels on your roof and so forth. I live in a wooded area. Trees all around my home. I wouldn't put solar panels on the roof because they would be totally ineffective. And the solution would be for me to chop down all my trees, which create oxygen and make the environment a little better. That would be terrible. And I would hate to think that all new people coming into town would have to cut all the trees so that solar would be effective. And I think that's something that, you know, needs to be looked at. And we're in a time of turmoil, not knowing what tariffs are going to do, not knowing what the costs are going to be, knowing that we get a lot of these panels and so forth from China and the materials going into them from China. If we do not pass this today, it doesn't mean we cannot pass it tomorrow. I think if we waited perhaps a year or two and see how some of the stuff shakes out and see if there are some modifications that need to be made. You know, some people want to build a home in a wooded area. Maybe they could get an exemption or something. But just passing this as it is written now, I think it's a little premature. And I would encourage people to think about it and maybe bring it again in another year or two, when at least some things could be figured out a little better.
Thank you, Chris. Mike Berlinski.
Thank you. So to clarify, for the solar required for certain new construction, those with fossil fuels, there are exemptions, and there is an exemption for shading. So there is no requirement to cut down trees. So thank you for thinking of the trees. You don't have to cut down trees to put on the solar that is mentioned under this code.
Tony, at the center microphone.
Oh, I thought you were going to go over here. I'm speaking in opposition to this, and I hope that what I'm going to say, it builds on what other people have said. I'm hoping I'm not repeating it too much. But I'd like to start with the DOE document, Specialized Energy Code Adoption Process, which John brought up earlier. And I want to read from that. It says in bold print, "Once the Specialized Code is adopted by a municipality, all future additions, amendments, and modifications of the Specialized Code are automatically adopted unless a municipality rescinds the authorized, the adoption of the Specialized Code itself." That statement is open-ended. We do not know what those amendments are or what they will be. And as John pointed out, given the backdrop that we're trying to move to net zero by 2050, this is a path for getting there. And if that happens, it's going to affect every householder in this town and cost us tens of thousands of dollars. It says here that we have the possibility, if we don't like something, that we can rescind the Specialized Code in the future. These amendments are scheduled by the document to come out roughly every three years. So in three or six years' time, there will be a number of investments already made to satisfy this code. And most likely, the town will have received grants. So rescinding this code in the future is going to be very difficult. And I would suggest that we not try to wait and do that in a later date. What we are being asked to do is to approve an article whose terms are not well-defined. Unless, unless this is, the amendments are clearly defined so that we know what we're getting into, we're basically giving them a blank check. So my recommendation is to vote against this code unless that particular clause is either removed or modified so that we understand the details of it. And vote no, please.
Thank you. Donali?
Thank you. Donali Delmar, 8 Dunstville Road. I move the question.
All right, we have a motion to move the question. What that means is that, and that takes precedence over anything else. What that means is we're going to take a vote to decide whether or not we want to have any more discussion on this. If the vote is in favor of moving the question, that means we will terminate debate and take our vote. If the vote is against moving the question, then we'll continue with our debate. Does everybody understand? A yes vote means we stop debate and go back and vote on the underlying motion. A no vote means we continue our debate. All right, we're, it's a two-thirds vote to terminate debate. So requires two-thirds. Everybody clear on what we're doing? Sorry, wrong again. It's a majority vote. Got it? All right, we're going to do this with our clickers. Everyone have their clickers in hand. If you want to terminate debate, vote yes with your green 1A button. If you want to continue debate, vote no with your red 2B button. Voting is now open. I'm about to close the vote. Okay, voting is now closed. The motion to terminate debate passes. 258 in favor of terminating debate, 39 against. Point of order, yes? That's for the underlying motion, not. No, I'm sorry. Can you say again? That, this is, this is wrong. Yeah, the slide is wrong. It's a, it's a majority vote for the underlying motion. Yes?
So just real quickly, legislative bodies such as ours generally have a principle of non-delegation. So my question for Town Council is, there's a, this sentence here under section, whoops, pardon me, under 150-4 Specialized Code, basically delegates the authority of Town Meeting.
I'm sorry, this is, this does not sound like a point of order to me. This is continuing debate, which the, which the body has already voted against.
Is this, is this amendment, is this article legal? And that's the question for Town Council.
Even if I, even if I wanted to answer that question, I couldn't because the body has already voted to terminate debate. All right. So now we'll move to the vote on the main question. It is a majority vote. It's been corrected, not a two-thirds vote. It's a majority vote. If you want to vote in favor of adopting the Specialized Energy Code, you'll vote yes with the green 1A button. If you want to vote against it, you'll vote no with the red 2B button. Okay, voting is now open. All right, I'm about to close the vote. Last chance. Okay, voting is now closed. Please, please. The motion fails. 137 in favor, 165 against. Thank you. We're now at Article 21. Under Article 21, I have a motion to amend the town's general bylaws pertaining to dogs to increase the fines for violation of those bylaws and make them consistent with Mass General laws as shown on the screen and in your motions booklet. Is there a second to that motion? Are there any questions or comments on this motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of adopting this motion, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion passes by a majority. It is not unanimous. We're now at Article 22. Under Article 22, I have a motion that the town pass a non-binding resolution to support the acceptance of that 1,780-foot section of Boston Road from 45 Boston Road to the spot approximately 100 feet south of Blake's Hill Road, which is currently operated and maintained by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, with layout and acceptance of this portion of the road to occur at a future town meeting after completion of the Boston Road Improvement Project. Is there a second to that motion? Are there any questions about this motion or comments? Yes, sir, at the center microphone.
Doug Burns for Black Bear Lane. What are they talking about? I mean, we've already got Boston Road being ripped up because we have a big plan.
All right, I think we have your question. Jeremy, do you want to explain?
So currently, the town owns Boston Road from Main Street down to just south of Crown Road. And MASTDOT owns from that point down to 110. So one of the incentives of funding the Boston Road reconstruction project was to give that 1,800 plus minus feet of the road to the town once we're done. Has little value to DOT in way of maintenance. It's more of a burden to them.
Agreed. But it said, said layout and acceptance to occur at a future town meeting. What layout are you changing?
So the layout won't change, and this is a non-binding resolution. DOT had asked us, just, they'd like to see a show of support early on. So the layout is the public way. So they have to go through a formal process of laying out the road and then at the time of acceptance.
Hasn't that already been done since you started construction?
It's more of a legal layout.
This should have been done before you broke ground.
Okay, let's not have a back and forth. Kristin?
So a layout of a public way does not occur until after a project is complete in which you approve Diane Lane for the laying out of the public way. MASTDOT has asked the town of Westford for a resolution to, in the future, accept Boston Road. And we will be coming back to Town Meeting for that layout officially in future years. But they did ask for this resolution moving forward.
So, so what I would have asked is that this would say specifically as, with, as-built drawings that we have today, as opposed to leaving something totally open-ended, that you can do whatever you want in the future. That's what this is saying.
Just remember, this is a resolution. It's not binding. This is just a resolution.
But I know how this town works. This will be taken as gospel. So let's, let's get, be clear. If we're going to put a resolution and have the selectmen off, the will of the people should be very clear. What you're doing, we accept, but we don't accept you to change it beyond there.
Well, maybe Kristin can explain the difference between this, having this as a resolution and why we're doing that instead of.
So MASTDOT actually asked for the town to lay out the public way in advance of the construction. I, as town manager, was not comfortable with that. Town Council was not comfortable with that. MASTDOT said if the town of Westford would accept a resolution. MassDOT said if the town of Westford would accept a resolution, we would be comfortable and we would waive that requirement. We do not have the total as-built plans right now as the construction project is underway. We do have the 100% design plans at this point in time in which the engineering department and the DPW are comfortable with. So this really is just to say to DOT, we are comfortable with moving forward. Today's Town Meeting will likely be comfortable with accepting this road in the future.
Okay.
Bob?
Yeah, I kind of, we've been dealing with what the state's been doing. We've got dead trees wrapped to be preserved and we've got live trees scheduled to be cut down. There are a lot of changes taking place as they go and discover new things. And if this is non-binding, I don't see what difference it makes to the state. And there is a, when we accept the lower zone, we no longer get the free plowing that we get now. Is that correct?
Yes, at that point, we would need to perform the plowing. By adding this to our inventory, our Chapter 90 allotment does go up slightly.
Yeah, and, you know, the original promise was that this would be state money. In fact, it's NIMCOG money, which was our money anyway. I would say, let's wait and see what they actually do before we accept anything. I'm not opposed to necessarily accepting it. I just don't see why we have to buy something at this point and commit to something that when it's done, we might say, no, we really would like to keep that little section of highway under state control.
So this is non-binding. In a couple of years, once Boston Road is complete, constructions all done, we will come back here for a formal vote that will be binding. At that point, we would take over acceptance if it passes.
Town Council would like to address some of the legalities of this.
Thank you, Thiru, Madam Moderator. So just to sort of be clear, right, generally speaking, when the town is going to accept a road that has been built by someone else, you want to wait until that road is finished to make sure that what you're accepting has been built properly. In this case, MassDOT came to the town and said, well, we want to turn this, this over to you at the end of the project. We want you to go to Town Meeting and accept this as a town way. And neither Kristin nor I were comfortable with that because, once you accept it as a town way and they frankly do, do not do a good job on it, you would have no recourse. So the, on the other side of the coin, if you don't cooperate with them at all, they could just walk away tomorrow. They have no obligation to you. So the compromise position here is to have Town Meeting give a sense of the meeting, a non-binding vote that says, if you finish it the way that we expect you to finish it, we will go ahead and accept it. And as I said, it's a compromise. It's not locking you into anything, but it's a show of good faith and it's enough to get them to continue the project to completion.
Thank you, Greg. All right, seeing no further comments, I'll call for the vote. All of those in favor of Article 22, please say aye. All opposed? The motion passes. It is not unanimous. Okay, Article 23 was decided in the consent agenda, so we're at Article 24, which is a citizen's petition to change the date and time of town elections. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, we have a lead petitioner here to make, I believe, a motion to dismiss.
Hi, my name is Valerie Young. As a private citizen, I submitted this citizen's petition to consider moving town elections from a Tuesday to a Saturday, as several other towns do. And because of the impact to the schools, we close all nine schools, even though voting takes place in two schools, and our staff engage in a full day of professional development. However, the timing of that being May, six weeks from the end of school, isn't really the optimal time of year for professional development. So when the Select Board discussed this petition, they indicated willingness to do further research into alternatives. So for today, I'm asking for Town Meeting to dismiss this article.
Is there a second to the motion to dismiss? I got to the motion. Okay. All in favor of dismissing this, this article, please say aye. All opposed? The motion passes. It's not unanimous. Before you leave, I have a favor to ask. We have four folks here who really deserve some appreciation today. Andrew Perriner-Sweet and Scott Hazelton, who've served multiple, multiple years in volunteer capacities on the Select Board and other boards, will not be in those capacities at our next Town Meeting. In addition, we have two folks who are going to be retiring after this Town Meeting. We have Mark Miller, who's done everything to make sure your voices are heard at these meetings, and Mike Wells, who's done everything to make sure the votes are counted at these meetings. I'm told Christine Collins, our tax collector, is retiring as well. I think you still have to pay your taxes, but she won't be there to get it. Okay, this concludes the business of our, of the 296th Annual Town Meeting for the town of Westford. Thanks for your help and your time and your participation in this very direct form of government. Please feel free to contact me if you have any suggestions about the process. And please remember to return your clickers. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Still not unanimous. See you next time.